All the poles, everything's underground.
Is there any utilities under the small, I call it the small field?
I don't know about when it comes to the light pole. I know when we did the basketball court, the main power to the park comes from Green Lane, from the north to the south, runs through the basketball courts, and then comes out by the concrete where that big green box is at. That's all the main electrical lines. Now, sanitary lines, water, all that, I have no idea how it works.
So, Jason, you may have to contact...
You gotta get somebody with underground utilities.
Yeah, the sanitation department, the water department.
Water, too.
Or check with Rick and he may be able to tell you who to get ahold of.
Right. That's gonna be a big expense you're gonna have to watch on. I know when we put the power in for the music house on the basketball courts, that comes from the telephone pole, that'd be northeast about a little field, comes down and runs along the fence, and that's that big yellow box right there behind the basketball court.
Right.
That's all, 250 amp power there.
Okay.
So, that'll be, yeah, part of the stuff that we'll have to... Right, yeah, that'll be your big expense, 'cause if I had somebody donate, that would be great, but...
Okay, cool. All right, well, thank you.
I think that's a great project.
Okay, moving on, we have board of commissioners this time of the year. The fire board naturally is gonna be council member Gifford and Boruski with Gene Cole, Sergeant Park will be myself, Dusty Schwartz, and Donna Ledger. Other renewal community development boards have been made up of the council members. The park board member needs to be reappointed as Michelle Stenner and Amy Stevens, they go both to 2015. Code enforcement board Shirley Bishop and Bonnie Linden, they both go to the year 2016. We're going to be adding Kathleen Hamilton to planning and zoning.
She's outside.
We thank her for her involvement.
Is she on the floor?
She's two weeks away from being due, somebody'd like to give her a seat.
If we can have a motion to approve those members, that would be greatly appreciated.
I'll second it.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have vacancies on the board of adjustments, we have two vacancies there. We have a vacancy on the housing authority, we have a vacancy on the ethics board, we also have a vacancy on the parking citation board. We would love to have your help.
We got two on the ethics board and one on the ethics board.
We have two on there already.
Who do we have?
We have Dr. Cook and Mrs. Rawls.
Mrs. Rawls.
Bill's Rawls.
Still have him, we need to know.
Right. Anybody interested in participating in the voting of those volunteers, please let me know. I'm gonna move on to the city minister or the city attorney's report now.
I only have one thing, just to clue you in on, later on, it says, agenda says we're gonna have a meeting, first reading on 2014, too. I had sent you a draft of that ordinance for closing court. They did not get the description from the, or at least they didn't get the correct description from the surveyor yet, so the first reading will be in February.
Okay.
That's it.
Hopefully everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the December 3rd council meeting. There's no changes or adjustments in your motion to approve that minute.
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Madsen, seconding comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have 2014 number one, amending the Dayton code of ordinances regarding the flood damage prevention.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, 2014 number one, an ordinance amending the Dayton code of ordinances, chapter 152, regarding flood damage prevention. This ordinance amends various portions of Dayton code of ordinances, chapter 152, which sets forth building restrictions within federal flood hazard zones to bring them into compliance with federal law. This ordinance requires that the uses to floods be protected against flood damage at the time of initial construction. It substantially amends definitions of terms in 152.05, makes minor change to 152.06, making it applicable to certain portions of the city. Makes minor amendments to 152.07 stating the basis for establishing a flood hazardous area. Makes minor amendments to 152.12 disclaiming liability. Makes substantial amendments to 152.31 specific standards allowing the lowest level of a building to be one foot above the 100-year flood plan and amending standards for utilities and fulfilling requirements in flood-prone areas. Makes minor amendments to 152.32 standards for streams without established base flood elevation. Makes amendments to 152.34 standards for subdivisions in flood-prone areas eliminating requirements for emergency access streets. Makes amendments to 152.35 standards for accessory structures in flood-prone areas. Makes minor amendments to 152.36 standards for critical facilities. Makes minor amendments to 150.250 describing the flood-prone administrators' duties and responsibilities. Makes minor amendments to 152.52 procedures for granting variances. And makes minor amendments to 152.98 procedures for issuing notice of citations violations. This ordinance amends apply to all areas of special flood hazards within the jurisdiction of Dayton as identified in the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. And that's the first reading.
All right, thank you. The next, we have order 2014-1R, which is supporting reform relating to trafficking in heroin.
And I'm gonna be that one. 2014-1R, a resolution supporting reform of Kentucky's Dubai statutes 218A, 1412-1B relating to trafficking in heroin. Whereas the abuse of heroin is a growing problem in northern Kentucky and is an epidemic, whereas parents are losing their children to heroin overdoses, whereas children are losing their parents to heroin overdoses, and the abuse of heroin by one or both parents dramatically increases the risk of abuse or neglect, as well as physical, academic, social, and emotional problems of these children affected by this abuse. Whereas the majority of the crime, including but not limited to public intoxication, possession of drug paraphernalia, driving under the influence of a controlled substance, theft, burglaries, and robberies are directly, directly related to this horrible addiction to heroin. Whereas heroin addicts face a disproportionately higher burden of infectious diseases, including HIV/AIDS, hepatitis, tetanus, cellulitis, thrombocytosis, and necrotizing phageitis, creating a higher taxpayer burden to the community for the treatment and care of these diseases. Whereas families in Dayton and northern Kentucky are in the front line of the heroin problem in Kentucky. Whereas Kentucky General Assembly lessened the penalties for trafficking in heroin in House Bill 463, and the resulting consequences was to embolden drug traffickers to traffic in heroin in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. And whereas the city of Dayton Police Department is spending valuable resources to create and manage a task force with other local police departments to specifically target and combat this heroin epidemic, now therefore be it ordained by the, be it resolved by the city of Dayton, Campbell County, Kentucky. That section one, for the reasons stated above, the city of Dayton, Kentucky declares its support for the Kentucky General Assembly to reinstitute the penalties for trafficking in controlled substances, specifically heroin, as they existed prior to House Bill 463. Section two, for the reasons stated above, the city of Dayton, Kentucky declares its support following, declares its support for following specific changes to Kentucky Run By statute 218A. Remove any weight threshold for heroin trafficking. Make any heroin trafficking a Class C felony for the first offense and a Class B felony for the second or subsequent offenses. And three, require anyone convicted of trafficking in heroin to serve at least 50 percent of the sentence before being eligible for probation or parole or the remaining time being conditionally discharged. Section three, for the reasons stated above, the city of Dayton, Kentucky declares its strong support for allocating resources to the creation and management of correctional policies for addiction treatment, which could dramatically improve prisoner and community health, as well as reduce both taxpayer burden and reincarceration rates. Section four, for the reasons stated above, the city of Dayton, Kentucky declares it strongly encourages the Kentucky General Assembly to enact these reforms during the 2014 regular session. Section five, the city hereby directs that the order be forwarded immediately to all northern Kentucky General Assembly members. Section six, this order shall be signed by the mayor and tested by the city clerk, recorded, and shall be in effect at the earliest time provided by law.
Basically what this is, is just a resolution for all the cities to get together, act as one strong unified force, and present it to the legislature so that we can get some more things moving and try to get heroin out of there if you can and under control. It was started, I guess, by Mayor Myers out of Highland Heights, and he's just been taking us around the city, so...
Can you give a motion? A motion that we accept order number 2014-1R?
I'll second it.
Motion debated, seconded, any other comments?
I just have one comment, Ken. I am all in for this, but it just disturbs me that our great state of Colorado just passed a bill out there where you can go into a store and buy marijuana. We've gotta stop this stuff in the United States, people, and this is one way for us to stop it.
Motion debated, seconded, no other discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. New York Department has, Chief McBride, you have anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Kate Donovan, you have anything for the courts office?
The only thing I have is, I cast out the financials to everybody, we have a copy of my report, but I also cast out the annual financial disclosure, so everybody needs to get those back to me before January 31st, on or before December 31st. And we just sent out the renewals for the handicapped parking spaces, so I'll have a final report set on the February 18th.
Okay.
I'll call you.
Michael, do you have any information?
First of all, I wanna thank the Civic Club and any members of the Main Street Organization that participated in Light Up Dayton. It was a tremendous success, we had some bad weather, but the event went off thanks to the Civic Club's experience, and hopefully with a couple of extra hands down there, take some of the burden off them, so I wanna thank all the volunteers that made that a success. I wanna thank John and Tina Nyer. Tina is a member of our newly formed Thorpe Dayton Heritage Museum Board. Tina and her husband donated $500 towards the museum, and I've got a letter here from Tina saying, "Please accept this donation, $500, to further the education programs of Thorpe Dayton Heritage Museum. This money must be used for things such as computers, scanners, or other educational items, as deemed necessary by the museum committee for programming for the children of Dayton." So, I wanna thank the two of them for their generous donation. I wanna give a brief update on our facade grant program. Everybody should have a copy of the financials, this has been updated as of today. Last meeting I asked, there were, one, two, three, there were four applicants that were awarded money that up to last council meeting in December had not started any work or had coordinated with me to start any work, so I asked that, the total amount that was awarded to them that did not look like it was gonna be used was $10,110. I asked at the last meeting that if none of those applicants finished the work and turned it in for reimbursement, that that money be used to cover $5,763 that was left on our museum facade project. So, none of those applicants completed the work or turned in any forms for submission. The amount that was needed to cover it has actually been reduced a little bit due to Butch White gave us a little bit of a discount, so we actually didn't need as much as we originally thought. But, as you can see, we have had five projects completed, and the only one that's in progress is the museum facade. Just a brief update on that, Butch White did the tile in December, they ran into a couple of problems with needing to put down and slope the entrance, so water didn't drain, so that took up a little bit of time. The glass company is coming in tomorrow morning to frame it, and they said as soon as they get the framing in, which should be done tomorrow as well, it'll take a day or two for them to get the glass in. Once the glass is in, Nyer Construction is coming in and just touching up the, some drywall and putting in, putting back in the tiling and the ceiling, so we're getting really close to wrapping that up. When that's finished, there's gonna be an excess of $4,670 and 14 cents from the original $30,000 that was awarded by you all to us for the grant fund. So, I would ask that our Main Street, our next Main Street meeting is in, at the end of this month, and that is on January 28th, and that we discuss on how we could use that money as the Main Street group. I would wanna use it for a facade project, but I wanna open it up to them to see if they have any other ideas that I can bring to you all next month. But I did want to let you know the update on that and how much money will be left over after the museum facade is finished. So, if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer those. Like I said, our next Main Street meeting is on January 28th. I've got, and just about completed, our work plan for the year, which I will pass out next month. I'll make sure the police chief and the fire chief get a copy as well, so they know what events we have planned and when. We've got a much larger group this year, as I said, the Civic Club and the Main Street Board have joined, so we're looking to put on some new events. We're not looking to take any away that the Civic Club did, we're just gonna absorb them and their events, so you'll continue to have the Easter egg comment and Light Up Dayton Bull aren't going away, we're gonna continue to put those on. One last, one last bit of information, I wanna update you all on the park conversion. From the Riverbank to Dayton Pike, I've had to have both of the appraisal reports done, or have, both of the appraisals that were done, one on the Riverbank and one on Dayton Pike, have to be reviewed by, a review appraiser. I found somebody out of Lexington to do that. I've heard from numerous people around the state that this guy Will is the best, he's got the documents, he and I are gonna schedule an appointment, he's gonna come up here at some point, I'm gonna take him to both properties, and once that is reviewed, then I'll be able to submit our report to the Department of Local Government and National Park Service, and they'll in turn hopefully approve the park conversion. So, I'm gonna give you an update on that as well. Any questions? I'd be happy to...
I have a question for you, and I think it was on one of us gonna be the facade grant. The old White's Building, I drive that by that daily, could you ask that whoever the owner is, either hang their curtains or hang their, it just looks in disarray.
What, the White's Building?
Next door to Chinese restaurant.
Is it 601? That, I mean, if we can just get him to hang the, or take the shades down, I don't care what he does or what they do, I shouldn't say he, but either take them down or put them up properly, or put curtains up or something, 'cause it just looks, it doesn't look very good for the...
But you can ask that, but you can't require it, right? Or you can't incite them, or because it's inside his building, right?
It depends, I would assume how bad it looks, I'll go take a look.
Well, I don't think so.
I know the gentleman, I can at least give him a call.
Yeah, I mean, just try to persuade him a little bit.
I think, I think that's it.
Steve Michael?
I would like to say something, Michael. How many members do you think there are on the Main Street Board right now?
I think we've probably got 11 or 12 now.
Good, so that's, that's pretty good, and it's a bunch of hard-working volunteers. Anybody that feels like the Main Street isn't progressing or not doing what you think it should do? Feel free to show up at those meetings, because it's a hard-working group of people, and we try our darndest to patronize the businesses down here.
Yeah, our next meeting, our next meeting is the 28th. You don't have to come, be a member of the board, you can just come see what it's all about, volunteer for an event or two. We do have a couple of new shops that have opened up, boutique shops, the French Gate and the Gilded Lily, down on Gary Barlow's building, so be sure, I've stopped in there, got some cool stuff, check them out, it's pretty neat, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ricky, you have anything for the public works?
Yeah, just a couple of things, of course, we've been busy with the snow and ice. The only thing I have is, I think it was Saturday or Saturday night, somebody drove inside of Gillem Park and decided they were gonna do doughnuts and step out in the outfield, and tore about 20 feet of the fencing down in the outfield by Berry Street, and one of our officers, Timon, made a charge, and the guy was, when they got him, I think he was in Highland Heights, so he was caught and he was charged. So, when we get the report or whatever, I can have somebody come in and fix the fence. About 20 feet of fence, it was destroyed, basically.
Normally what we do is, for something like that, we'll ask for restitution through the court for, once we get the actual, the bill for what, what it will cost, we'll go through the court system and ask for restitution to the city for the property damage.
Could you go through his insurance company?
We could.
Yeah, we'd be able to beat up the process.
We wanna, the other thing, too, is we wanna get him under the court, forcing him to have to pay some form of it.
Well, on that topic also, it seems like whenever it snows, we have somebody that likes to climb the flood wall or try to, in their car or their truck or their Jeep or whatever, which wraps it all up. They also do the same thing on Dayton Pike, so if anybody sees anybody doing that, please call the police right away, we'd like to be able to catch them and pound the car, throw away the key.
Then the only other thing I have is, I don't know if councils should come up with something, or the mayor or chief, but on the new road that goes behind the flood wall, my opinion, I think we need to keep traffic off of it. I mean, if you're not involved in the construction or the development, well, there's no guardrail up yet, until there's a guardrail being put up and the screen, the fence, we probably should keep all traffic off in that road. I don't know if you guys have to make an ordinance for that, or, I mean, how do you, the police department wouldn't have to be the ones, I mean, when I see somebody down there, I actually tell them they're not supposed to...
I've seen someone down there on the road.
Yeah.
Do we have a sign up anywhere that says, "Don't..."
Well, we've got the construction sign, I mean, it's a construction area.
I think you're just gonna start putting the orange barricade back up every night.
Well, I mean, they got the fence up and the orange, what they do is, the problem is they're having, is when they take the cones and the fence down, and you got plumbers and stuff down there, people just drive up while they're working during the day. It's not, I don't, I haven't seen anybody take the barriers down and drive at night, it's all being done while they're working down there. And, I mean, I can have a sign made, you know, no traffic.
Construction zone only?
I mean, construction traffic only, I mean, that's...
Construction, I think that might be helpful. People may think it's open just to go back there and look.
With no guardrail or anything, and I'm not plowing it, I'm not salting it, so, I mean, I've heard say an area that wall's, you know, 20 feet high, somebody did just try to come down there just flying and messing around, it, but it is, it is construction, so.
I mean, it'll help, it'll help our case if we do catch someone, if there is some type of sign that says, "No, only construction traffic," or "No public through traffic," or something.
Will you get a sign?
Yeah, I think we should.
It'll take probably a while to get it. That's all I have.
Ricky, I got a couple of questions for you. Before I came to the council meeting tonight, a citizen called me and said, "They got a phone call from Republic Service Trash." Is that affiliated with CSI? They said, "Since the inclement weather was coming, the trash wouldn't be picked up tomorrow, it'd be picked up the next day," and I thought, I thought we was CSI, is Republic...
Republic is CSI.
Yeah.
So, so is Trash Day not gonna be tomorrow, is it gonna be the next day?
Yeah, we was the same, a citizen told us, we didn't know about it, and it is delayed one day.
Okay, so, okay, 'cause I'm not informed too much with CSI, usually the girl's in the office, or Don knows more. All right, I didn't know, and at the top of Urban Terrace, and right on up the road where Mr. Early had his property, all those houses there, there was a zoomer amount of ice there. Can we throw some salt on that, 'cause, is that Belmont?
What's happening there? The little stone house that's right there, about middle ways of Belmont, right?
Where they put a new driveway in it or something?
Yeah, okay, they got a four-inch discharge pipe that's pumping water out into the street.
Well, I was talking about Joe Early, you know...
It's from there that goes up a little bit farther.
Oh, okay, but if we could just throw some salt in...
Probably, I, we salted, I mean, we salted it twice today.
Yeah, I just happened to notice.
The water just keeps running out. We got an alley behind, up by the railroad tracks up there behind Fifth Street where they, the condos are, the housing right there on Benham, that alley's got two inches of ice on it. I mean, we put a ditch in, the water runs off the railroad tracks, and, I mean, when it stays cold like this, I mean, I don't know what else we can do.
I just, salt, what's going on Route 8? I drove Route 8 a couple of days ago, and they're tearing a lot of trees down.
Trying to put ice in there.
Is that sanitation or what?
No, that's Duke clearing power lines.
Is that what they're, 'cause I see little flags, I didn't know if was, if that was gas or...
Well, it's the state and Duke, 'cause they weren't taking a lot of trees down because of the power lines.
Okay.
And then also trees that are falling over on the road, so the state's doing some of it, too. That's what it does.
But it's nothing has nothing to do with gas lines or water?
No, it goes all the way out to Silver, out past Silver Grove.
Yeah, it goes all the way out.
I just, I just observed, and I just wanted...
I mean, I just found out, too, I knew they were taking trees and trimming them.
Right.
Very good. At the first slide, that's it, every big problem.
Most of them, they're just topping and getting out of the power lines, and they're putting new poles up in a few places out there.
Okay, very good.
Anybody else?
Hey, Rick, the guy that was, did the field damage and knocked down the fence, are they gonna try to get him to rest to get the field back to normal, or was it that bad damage?
No, the field wasn't that bad, 'cause, I mean, it was still frozen, I mean, there's a few ruts, but it took down about 20 feet of fence and a couple of poles.
I just worry about the kids getting hurt when they're in the outfield on track.
Yeah, right now, I mean, there's a pole that, you know, I could go ahead and just yank it out, I mean, 'cause it's bent over, but other than that, I mean, the fence is still standing.
Thanks, Rick, did a good job on the streets.
Yeah, I'm sure.
New York, does the standing committee report finance move Boruski?
Nothing.
Public safety, no Volter?
Nothing.
Public works, no round?
No, no recall.
Person Real Estate, member Burns?
Just, am I correct, Jason and Tom, at the next meeting, I shouldn't leave you out, is it January the 20th?
Yes.
Next meeting for Park Board is January 20th.
Personal Law and Printing, member Gifford?
Nothing.
Economic Development, member Hurd?
The only thing I really have, it has to do with the Homes Consortium, and just to let everyone know that we should be having a meeting in January, and hopefully we're gonna get approved for some funding from the Homes Consortium to assist Honk in one of the homes that they are rehabbing down at the end of Fifth Street. And Honk is still working on finding the funding to put the two houses in on Third Street, where they just took out the one broken-down building.
Okay. This time, is anybody on council, make petitions?
Uh-uh.
Would anybody, I would like to just counsel at this time? Yes, please. Can you go to a podium, please?
Does anybody want to address the elephant that's not in the room, I guess, in terms of the absence of our city administrator?
He offered his resignation and I accepted it.
Okay. Care to share why? You don't care to share, or you don't know why?
I know why, he just didn't wanna be around any longer, I guess, and decided it was time for him to resign. He's offered it several times, so I accepted it.
Okay. I just thought it would be appropriate for that to at least be voiced in some manner or way.
We have a couple of things that we need to take care of before we can offer any comments.
Of course. One thing I would like to mention, only because I think it has been mentioned more than once, and I think it sadly has affected your department a little bit. Not just my own experience, but that of several of my neighbors who have had occasion to contact county dispatch for either non-emergency or mostly non-emergency situations, and the response has been less than supportive, favorable, or hopeful. And unfortunately, I know that at least a couple of people have wanted to have direct contact with you, and have been, basically been asked to play the game of 20 questions before they can actually get in touch with you. I don't know how germane it always is for your clerk to note virtually every detail of what needs to be discussed with you, and I guess I'm asking for what is she required to get in terms of information before you actually receive a phone call. before you actually receive a phone call?
She... she'll gather information for me so she can prioritize, you know, is it something that's an emergency? Is it something that the person needs, says, "Just get back to me in a couple of days." So she helps prioritize for me.
Okay. I think that the amount of detailed information...